Excuse me, gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and start the meeting.
It's all right.
It's six o'clock. It is Monday, June 20th, 2023. We're here at the John Publical Meeting Room. We have guests from over town who have a quick meeting tonight, but a very important one. We're going to have some general public comment to start. Then we'll go on to the local concerns for the Gallacher sidewalks. And keep me on doing the... People see on the screen someone waiting for the minute. Raise your hand if you know that they're missing something. We got Nick doing this. Okay, let's go ahead. Is there anyone here tonight? Just for general public comments.
I'm Renato Silva.
All right. Very good. And so that will be kind of, we have the therapy discussions coming up a little later. We do on that. So if there's no general public comment, we'll go ahead and move on to local concerns for the Gallacher scoping study. And in terms of state and model, we have Chris Hunt. Chris, do you want to roll up? And Emily Lewis as well, from DuBois and King.
Hey, everybody. Where should I sit?
Right there, spine, or wherever you guys are comfortable. Go ahead. And Dawn, actually, you're kind of overseeing this project. If you want to kick us off, Dawn?
Well, I mean, we're just, you know, basically getting underway. This is, as I understand it, the first phase of before of starting. Oh, we had some more folk, yeah.
We're just starting.
And so, you know, we walked the, going to the site, and we walked the walked the area that's under consideration for the shared path sidewalk. And the boys that came now starts to go through, putting together all the facets of making it happen, you know. Engineering, what's in the way, what might not stay moved, wow, can get made out. And this first step really gets a lot of input. And then move on from there.
Of course, right in the middle, facilitate that, or how do you want to start that?
As long as it's a presentation.
Yeah, to have, I didn't put it on the laptop. It's just that one, right? I also, I have my laptop as well. I can log in if needed. I can join on the Zoom to share. Only use the checkup.
I don't know.
We have some other people there. People, make sure that that can speak up.
That was the one people joining.
Yes. You need the meeting ID or anything? Let's give it the... On the top.
Should I hit Enter too soon? No, it's being entered.
So you better, Chris?
Is it? Yeah. Get ready in construction season. Feel like we never finished lines.
So why I thought about sorry?
Sasha, could you get that? Where are you? Hey, Sasha?
I just got that.
Do folks want to be Gallacher acres as well?
Hmm.
Good. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, we're next to a maker.
Ain't your eyes like that?
It looks like maybe us and neighbors joined.
Yeah.
Next is a neighbor. In the top left.
You should get a shot.
Oh, my God, she's a neighbor. My word of the bond.
Good.
So they can't connect.
So you can't? I heard they played with the water table.
Have you had an email? Why don't you send Sasha an email?
I'd send it to Sasha, so it should be in detail somewhere.
The mountain. I saw the laptop.
I think that's your game.
No. Kylie? Don and Kate?
There's a lot of people out there.
No, no. A couple of years ago, he parked in front of Bush Forest. So I went to go there. He saw it, you know. Said, oh, yeah, I hate someone. Twenty. When he was a teenager.
They were in public comments.
And so I was just chatting with him because I was on the board, you know. So the town hall.
It's out of the world.
He was like, boy, you know, what's up? He said, you know, it'll be real cool. So that started a wheel turn.
That's an apple round.
So then I came.
More kids.
There are conversation going on here.
It's good stuff. So, okay, Emily, you can go.
All right. Thanks so much for having us here tonight. Emily Lewis, landscape architect and planner with DuBois and King. A few other members of my team that are not here tonight, but Dan Mallon, who's late there, are...
Just one second. You go ahead and continue.
Are also part of my team. And then we're joined by Chris from E-Trans, who's kind of helping lead the effort from the state side.
Very good. Just want to make sure.
So is it, is it being shared to Zoom as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're good to do.
Yeah.
Okay. So just have a brief overview of what a scoping study is. So they're kind of, when you're in planning, you have different levels of effort. So kind of your strategic plan or a larger city town plan has a lot of public involvement, outlines all the things you may hope to happen in your town. Scoping studies have the next level down. We're looking at a specific area, road, in this case sidewalk, that we want to add to. And looking at it to determine what might actually be feasible, get some preliminary cost estimates in there, get a lot of public feedback and involvement. And then that's able to be utilized to apply for additional grants if you have, able to do final design by construction. And then ultimately, you have your improvements. So the public involvement goes from very high, have that larger strategic plan process, and then continues throughout all your, all these different levels, but kind of steps down a little bit through each one. So the project today is looking, that we're talking about today, is looking at continuing sidewalk from the intersection of 100 and Route 2 down to Gallacher Acres. The study is required to look at several different options, including no build, which means not doing any, any option. And then we'll look at both sides of the road. I think there's a general idea of what might be preferred here, but we're required to look at all the options. We'll look at environmental constraints, physical constraints, things like utilities. There's also an archaeological historic study that is required to be a component of the project, so if there are any features of note that should be avoided or taken into consideration. So one of the first things that we did, we went out, did a sidewalk, myself, Chris, and Dawn, and I can't remember if there was a few others there. Looking at, at the corridor and seeing what constraints might be there that we might need to take into consideration. So I know that there are some underground utilities. There might be future utilities in the area. Several road crossings, several which are quite wide at the moment. Stormwater infrastructure, particularly on the north side of the road, adjacent property uses of the cemetery. That would be considered. And then other elements like vegetation and fences that aren't, may need to be relocated or replanted depending on where the sidewalk might go. And we'll look at configurations as should it be directly adjacent to the road, offset from the road. And so from there, want to get any feedback from tonight? Any concerns or questions that you may have about the project, local knowledge that we might, that we as consultants from the state might not be aware of? We'll start designing those concepts. And then later in the fall, we'll host a second public meeting to review those different alternatives and determine, get input again, and then determine what should be recommended alternative to present to the town, recommend to the town before.
One second, that's it?
That's it. Short and sweet. Any questions or comments?
Preferences, like what do you want to see?
Yeah.
Oh, so I'm Carla Francis, and this is Frank, who's in Ohio. And then son, and we live in Gallacher Acres. We've been there for four years. And so we love, you know, walking into town. I'm running a stroller right now, which is pretty tough on the Gallacher Acres side of Route 2, where it's pedestrian, it's okay, but it's pretty treacherous. So we'd love to see something that's, you know, kind of easy accessible. So bikers, strollers, anybody can get from our neighborhood into town and connect to where that sidewalk starts right by Snowfire. So right now, it feels like we're kind of cut off, just pedestrians when the weather is bad. Snow, ice, that kind of thing. So we can do it in the summer, but it's not safe. Can go fairground, but it's surrounded all the way to go. So, I mean, I see us using this multiple times a week as a family. And as the girl gets older, hopefully be able to walk and bike into town, you know, without us. So I want to see it play.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is my wife, Kristen, and I. This is our son Miles. We moved in the Gallacher Acres about two years ago, two or four years ago now. And yeah, I've enjoyed walking into Waterbury. There's lots of amenities. Farmers market, restaurants, things of that nature, playgrounds, kids that are nearby. We've been trekking, I don't know, probably a dozen times already, it seems like, this winter and this summer. Definitely, yeah, a great improvement to have someplace for, you know, there's, I don't know, probably 20 or 30 kids in the neighborhood are always riding their bikes around. And, you know, as they get older, I imagine they don't want to go to other kids' houses in neighborhoods. Waterbury Village. And besides being pretty treacherous in the winter, as Carla mentioned, the intersection of Route 2 and Route 100 is pretty expansive. It always feels like kind of playing a game of chicken there, you know. There's always cars turning up to go to Stowe and all directions. And we're kind of trying to cross by fairgrounds and snow fire. So I think maybe signalize, you know, crosswalk or something like that would really, I imagine, go hand in hand with adding sensibilities such as the sidewalk to that.
Yeah, there's no way to do it correctly. There's no right thing. So he and I have been buzzed by a big truck. I wasn't in the right because there wasn't a crosswalk, but he definitely wasn't in the right to buzz and...
Hi, my name is Nick Zudi. This is my wife, Melissa. We also live in Gallacher Acres and have a one-year-old son. Super similar stories that I'd like to reiterate, that there's just no good way to keep the neighborhood or pretty much blocked there unless you start walking on people's lawns or up fairgrounds, road, and then making an illegal crossing on 100. So, yeah, in the winter in particular, as they said, but this summer presents its own problems as well. So, yeah, same story. Wanted to reiterate it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else online? There's Paul Trusty. Paul, do you want to make a comment? How about Myra?
You probably heard plenty from us all kind of about the tape, but yeah, we agree with the neighbors and just everything that's been mentioned already. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
When you think about this, like what material do you envision? Do you envision a sidewalk, gravel, like wide enough to accommodate bikes and pedestrians at the same time? Like what's in your minds when you think about this path?
I think ideally a sidewalk, I think there's lots of trucks and tractor trailers that go by. So just having that space.
A curve in as well, good curb step.
Closing curves to a joint sidewalk with a connector. If you're going to build it on both sides, are you going to let it come across the road to the... But some, some sort of work with intersection is something that would be... It's also accessible for the clouds. And that's where the equality is all winter. I'm assuming, I'm just asking, is there going to be parking along that road where the sidewalk is? No, it's just going to be pedestrian access.
There's not enough right away there for a sidewalk in part.
But I don't, I don't know where I go, but I'm excited to see this.
Does everybody see it being on the Gallacher acre size, that would be the preferred size of the sidewalk?
That's what we've been saying.
We walk along the grass there, right? We walk that too.
Yeah.
That allows you to connect like at Stillfire, you know, Snowfire. Seems to make the most sense to cross there as opposed to like crossing across the road and going on.
Yeah, you're going two, two crosswalks by doing it that way, right? On the south side.
Maybe you're right, you said on the front row, so you can get up and down with anything.
I move here for Colchester and all, you know, around the neighborhood, just the sidewalk. You can push the roads and...
Is this people that 40 or even 50 coming in from more towns to Waterbury there?
Is 50, then it turns to 35.
Yeah.
I know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm coming to town kind of hot, you know, there's, there's all the Denver police officers on Route 2 there. And, you know, I think definitely having something with like a green space, you know, a kind of a buffer zone for the room there would probably be nice. And I know curves are more expensive, but if it, you know, elevated too and kind of have that protection and maybe you go down, there's a lot more earthwork involved with, it's kind of high.
Is there a walk in there too? Walking in the burglies?
Is there enough room for green space and a sidewalk?
Pretty tight.
To be determined.
Yeah, I'll have to take a look. It's, it's not super tight, kind of at first glance. But I want to take a look into that a bit more.
Are there any other kind of alternatives you guys can think of to section the road off a little? If the curve is right on the road, like pylons or something like that, especially on foreclosed areas?
I mean, if it's a sidewalk, there has to be some type of barrier between the road. If that's, if we're going with a, you know, concrete sidewalk that you're used to seeing like in the village here. So there has to be a curb barrier. But, yeah, delineators or pylons, there are different options for high traffic areas or more dangerous curves.
Also, if, I know a shared use path is also an option. I don't know if longevity is an issue with doing asphalt and, you know, developing cracks and ruts and trunks and things like that. If a sidewalk is the option to go with, I wonder if like even a bike lane also would be able to be put in since you're getting a little bit of with there.
Are there bike lanes further up Route 2?
No.
It's pretty sketchy.
Once, once you get into town, there's quite a few ways to move on the road. There's breakdowns, there's the parking spots, and the road itself goes down to 25. And it's much, much more likable. And of course, there's sidewalks once you get past Snowfire. Going in that direction, it's a matter of just the distance from the neighborhood to that corner.
And what is that distance?
From the neighborhood to 100?
To Route 100.
About a third of a mile.
It's such a short section to go totally isolated in the winter especially. There are so many people that live here that are just cut off. We can drive, but it's Vermont. It'd be better to walk.
So now that we've done this, this here and here, what are the next steps that we need to do to move forward?
So the next steps will be on D and K. We'll start putting, start coming up with alternatives, which just, which entails looking a little bit closer at the area, looking at where the right of way is, what are any obstructions that that reside within there, be able to determine how much room might there be to be able to do is it, is it sidewalk right adjacent to the road? Or can there be a buffer? And we'll start looking at some of those options. I'll continue to meet monthly with Chris and with Dawn to review those.
And when do you expect the study to be complete?
We have a patient somewhere in the middle of these years where I'm on the grid agreement. And so the next step for this group will be an alternatives presentation, which will do another side of the road like this.
Okay. And that will be do nothing, do this, or this side of the road or that side of the road?
Great sidewalk.
Or, or it could be, yeah, or it could be, you know, this side of the road, but two different options on this side of the road. Kind of sounds like tonight, like it might be the, be the direction we want to look at, but, yeah.
All right, well...
But we'll at least take a cursory look at both sides as well.
I mean, there's a crosswalk and putting the sidewalk on the other side, it's hard because you're not going to have the warrants and the two. The amount of pedestrians, daily traffic warranted. We could get an exception, but there's a lot of factors against that.
Yeah. Yeah, there are topography issues and, and topography issues and cemetery and things there.
This is a safety issue, I think alone, I mean, I wouldn't want to cross that, whether there was a signal, crosswalk or not.
Yeah, so we'll just kind of look at it and kind of note those issues as to why that might not be an alternative.
And then once this feasibility study is complete, at that point, can we go ahead and start looking for funds for the sidewalk?
Yep, this would be a good, so this is a transportation alternatives grant for the study. That will qualify for design, construction, or through BIPEN. Both of those programs would be good for this.
And when, do we have to wait for the completion of this study, or can we move forward? Probably can't without...
Yeah, I mean, the study will be the application, pretty much, so.
All right. Well, folks from Gallacher Acres and about, I appreciate everyone coming in tonight, whether it be online or here in person. Any questions pop up as you're going along? You know, this is a long-term process here, or at least another six to eight months while they're putting it together. Feel free at any point to let us know what you're thinking and come up with some new ideas. We'll be working with DuBois and King and Chris Hunt from the state. But we will certainly get this feasibility studied and hopefully move forward with a sidewalk for you.
Yep. Dawn, Dawn's your municipal project manager, so if you want to filter questions through him, he'll get them to us. Or it's pretty easy to find our contract info too.
And also, just as an aside for this, I've been working with John. If you could please, you know, make sure we have, can we tell you to get in contact to deal with the folks online as well? We are, you know, one of your neighbors, the fairground, Laura Gaines. She instigated the speed change to 35 by writing a letter to E-Change. And she, her goal was to drop it to 25, but you can't because the speed's coming from 50. So the only way you could drop was to 35. But there is some, you know, the process could be revisited to get the speed from 50 to 40 to 25 in that area. So we are going to try to move forward with that, write a letter and get support from, you know, the neighbors and folks in that area. So that'd be great.
Should we share info with you?
Our next, our next goal would be a, kind of 40 all the way on Route 2. Because it's hard to go 50.
Yeah.
It's a lot of it, so.
How would you do that is, is...
Probably Dawn's easiest is, is have it go through Sasha at the select 40.
Yeah, if you could just send, send something in, give her any contact, but she'll be with you. That'd be great.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. We'll see you in a month. We'll be zooming out in the next meeting.
You guys all set? Okay, we're going to go ahead and go ahead, move on. The next topic on the agenda tonight. Yeah, it's good. A lot of families from across the... So our next topic tonight on the agenda is GHR. And GHR Enterprises are the owners of the salvage yard on Route 2. And at our last meeting, they came in and were looking for a certificate for approval for a location of the salvage yard. And as a board, we decided that we're not going to sign that specifically because the place is looking pretty rundown and not really conforming to lots of... Yeah, you guys would like to introduce yourselves and...
I'm Steve Everin, GHR Enterprises, and I'm Kale Over.
So what are your plans down there, guys? The place is, the fence has fallen in, fence has fallen over.
As, as you know, what we purchased has been degrading. And we are doing our best to get it fixed up. And we are going to continue eventually a brand new fence. We'll repair what has fallen down now as required, because the state says shielding. It doesn't specify that it's got to be great shielding, and as you know, it is not great shielding. But it is shielding the property. It's our goal this year, but one to find a fencing company that can do it has been a challenge. The site overall has improved. Kale manages it. And people coming in have said, you know, it looks better than it has, but it still is a scrapyard. Our goal is, yes, new fence, some of the buildings should be coming.
Our goal is yes, new fence, um, some of the buildings should be coming down in the next year or two. As we can, we're going to improve the site because especially during the spring of that, the area is quite, is quite messy. But like anything, we're, we've had four years and making improvements, definitely the fencing has been on our list. And we had one issue that that southern fence fell, so we did put up some shielding as the state requires. Is it beautiful? Not at all. Um, do we want to get something better in there? Yes. It meets the state requirements, have you? And we are working to get something better.
Do you know, any, I know you're trying to, it's a hard account, but do you have any ideas here?
Again, finding a fence company has been the hardest. So I've, I've, I've put out three bids and have gotten none, literally no return. We use Google Earth to show them what we want. It's about 300 feet of new fence. The northern part, um, we don't use as much and probably will eventually do something different there. But if we have to, we talked that, that we may put the fence in ourselves because they just, they just, we can't find anybody. And I, I also own excavation companies so that, you know, it makes it a little easier for us. But we haven't, you know, haven't pushed it and now that you're pushing us.
Right, yeah.
Yes, you know, we, we will.
They want to be good neighbors and work with you, want businesses in town. You know, a junkyard is a junkyard. I'm not expecting to see, um, you know, Disney over there, but.
But in a sense, or.
Appropriate fencing for a junkyard. You know, we're not seeing that and, uh, so I would like to sometime, um, I don't know whether a, a site visit might be, up for everyone or not, but, uh, somewhere we can get some agreement so we can get you a certificate, but also get some, assurance of what's going to happen, uh, forward.
We definitely give you insurance. If you say, hey, we'd like to see an, an infenced by X amount of date, we'll do our best to, um, provide that.
Yeah.
And if there, for some reason, not, we believe in good documentation, like that's not happening. The coal, um, as it's called, uh, we do need to get it in in a month, you know, this month because I think it is, ends in August. And maybe the month that it has to be in forehand. Being, we knew that shielding and that's what they call, they don't call fencing, they don't shield. And he's like, you're meeting the shielding requirements now. It's not pretty. What would the town, what, what type of deadline would you like to see for us?
Well, I'd go by that site fairly recently and there was definitely pieces of fence that were just not attached.
Right.
I'd like to see those, if, if some best faith effort to, to repair those, I mean, you know.
Yeah, so like six, eight, six, eight panels.
Yeah, some two-by-fours and some, you know.
Why don't, um, we try to get over there within, maybe the pressure of the holiday running up against, um?
Well, how about we say we can get those patches up sooner rather than later?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll prioritize those and get those up and then, um, as far as new fence, I, I guess I'm just going to have to price what it's going to cost for us to put it up. Because as I said, we've been three, four companies and just nobody gets back to it.
I think you're fairly busy over there though.
Yes, yeah, and that's hence, that's why fences are fixed. We apologize for that.
You make lots of money so you can fix the fence.
Yeah, you make a lot of money.
There's not a lot of scrap in our places in the state really.
You guys have bowled up around here, right? That's about it?
So do you also get a permit from the state though too, right? You get one from the town and the state?
Yes, it, we have to provide the coal and then pay. It has, yeah, when, we knew the fencing, um, has been an issue and we're trying to address it. Fixing it, I might have more career now, right? We can patch it for sure. Long-term goals are to improve how, and we are working on improving the whole area, but, you know, time and money is, has been our, has been our biggest. And, um, we've gone through a process with a form that's almost completed that we should be able to start making some more advances.
This is the goal of eventually having a new fence.
A new fence, uh, and do most of our stuff on concrete rather than, rather than, you know.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question. I mean, I know metal recycling and scrap metal, what you guys are doing, we don't know what. It's, I've always been curious, like the, the fluids and the liquids and the oils and stuff that come in. How are you, I'm sure the state must be watching you more than what we can possibly do is right on the Musky River right there.
Yes, and that has come up in the year and they've come and did some site visits last year and gave us the thumbs up that we're doing the correct things. Cars come in, they go into the building undercover, drain the fluids. Then once we get to a certain amount, we shift the fluids out. And from there they go through the stack and then we, we get crushed or bailed. And then from there.
Truck it out.
Truck it out, yeah. And, um, it's, it's minimal, um, minimal damage to the earth is what we're trying to do. Very, unlike the former owner, a little bit more conscientious about it.
How long have you been doing it? Just, was this your first enterprise with?
With scrap yards, yes, I've been doing excavation for thirty plus years and I just wanted to get into something that was more, more steady. And it's been a challenge, you know?
What's your biggest challenge down there?
My biggest?
I'm glad you know that, yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, it's a lot of, you know, I make catalytic converters, stealing the Allison. I'm always the only state police online. I think we've got a little control now. What do you mean?
We mean, um, July 10th.
So by the time July 10th comes, the, the fence will be now. Okay. All right, that way, and then I'll work on, um?
All right, yeah, maybe by July 10th we can see what progress you've made on the fence. And also what kind of progress you've made on either finding something to do it or?
I think we'll just plan on now that you guys are promising us to get it done. I think we will just take it upon ourselves to, to make sure it's going to happen. And, uh, if by fall, possibly, if not, definitely by mid-spring next year because throwing them in, we might be put it up. Yes, that's what we're asking. Like I said, we want to be, um, good neighbors. We know we provide a, a needed service. So, um, we'll continue to do what the town asks.
Sure, well, we'll go ahead. We'll wait to sign this on the, the 10th and that should be a ton of time. As long as everything seems to be going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Again, we're willing, we're here, we're working with you, we're not trying to pass it, but it's times moved along a little bit, that we need some progress there.
That's fine.
Very good. Well, gentlemen, thank you for coming in. If you have any questions, you can use Sasha or any one of us. But we're typically, she disseminates things to us on a daily basis.
You need them to sign, isn't it Sasha?
Yes.
Is that paper?
All right, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
John Riley, uh, moment, John, are you ready?
Sure.
You ran out on us over here.
No, no, I just stepped aside.
He's got a sneaker, he's got a sneaker on him.
I saw that. So John, thank you, John, for coming. Your questions to us on some DRB discussions, uh, whether it go on. Is anyone listening to begin? Did I give the session at all or is this?
I don't think so. Not that I know of.
Yeah, if it doesn't, no, but otherwise I certainly prefer to be, we publicize it, so, uh, why don't you go ahead?
Well, I think what I had mentioned to Sasha was, um, I should come in and talk about primarily the Sova appeal.
Okay.
Just to kind of explain to the board why the DRB came down as we did. And, um, you know, I think on Bliss Ridge, I know it's on appeal to the environmental division, our decision. And really we've done what our job was, which was to hear the application, rule on it. I think, you know, the DRB is kind of done, but maybe not because, um, you know, really at that point, it's the select board that's, kind of overseeing the interests of the town. And the most recent development there is the zoning administrator, you should have noticed the violation. And I've actually heard a vote on a greater article when Dan Von Trapp brought in the appeal from that. So I think we will be hearing that at some point, so that process will, you know, follow its process. And it's really not appropriate to, you know, make any comment or prejudge in terms of what the zoning administrator did and how the board might consider it. It's semi, it's a kind of an appeal where there's rules of evidence involved more so than regular zoning areas. So we'll see how that plays out. Mr. Sova's appeal, um, the, um, you know, he came in and kind of explained. We asked him a lot of questions in terms of what, you know, he was applying for, what was expected or what was going to happen. You know, the board did issue a decision. I think it was processed as a home occupation. And we felt it didn't really fit into a home occupation category is how we concluded. But we felt we could approve it, um, as a cottage in history, which is a different type of home-based business. So that's what the decision did. It imposed some conditions in terms of, let, you know, limitations on lighting because the operation, the growing operation for cannabis will use artificial lighting several times in the year. But essentially, um, and in terms of having a security plan and there's some kind of, um, monitoring and, and again, I think we asked questions in terms of what the applicant was planning to do. And, um, essentially imposed his conditions, you know, the steps that, uh, Mr. Sova committed to. But, um, so, uh, the appeal's been taken. I mean, I think, I think the only reason I wanted to come in was I think the town should have an appearance in that matter because part of what's at issue is the, the bylaw and whether a cannabis operation can be considered a home occupation.
That's not being debated on my side. I'm not appealing, um, the bump up. I'm appealing, um, your, uh, conditions and attempting to regulate me beyond what you're allowed to by the state, which is just nuisance. And so you put in there that I cannot store, process or dry cannabis. And that is prohibitive of my enterprise, um, and that's not allowed. And so I actually brought text from Bill H. 270, which passed in the last few weeks. And it hasn't been enacted as an act yet because it's just in that limbo time. And here the language does two things. It furthers what I just said. And it also creates a, it puts the outdoor portion of my, um, business, the outdoor cultivation aspect, into ag. So now it's ag exempt. And, um, which means that no conditions can be put, you know, beyond ag nuisance type of stuff. So I have the, I have the info here. I brought it for you guys to read. I have no issues with, um.
What do you know? What's the bill on that?
It's H. 270.
H. 270?
Yeah, and so the governor let it pass without signing it. So I had, uh, brought this to the attention of the DRB. I had also, you know, the, the thing about nuisance, was already law last year and I also brought that in. The zoning administrator actually supplemented my application with it. And I don't really know what happened in an executive meeting, but, um, storing this part and parcel of a home occupancy or cottage in the street.
What was I saying?
I, I'm not finished. I'm not finished. I'm not finished.
But you didn't dry, you didn't tell us those things.
It doesn't, I didn't expect you to go as far as you did, you know, majority of my, majority of my, majority of my harvest is fresh frozen for processing into edibles and concentrates. I am required by state law to dry cannabis for testing. To impose that I can only fresh freeze and, and put them on a truck immediately and send them off without being able to harvest and store the product for any kind of time until I can get it out.
That's what you told us you were going to do.
I was freezing it, but it's, it still takes time for it to freeze and harden and be ready for transport. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say that there was going to be a pickup truck waiting and they were going to go into mobile freezers that were being transported. I said it was using Tress freezers to harvest into freezers. And the reason I was bringing that up was because the number one cause of odor nuisance is drying of cannabis in unsealed environments. I have a plan to bring in a 40-foot storage unit to dry. I'm bringing that storage unit in as a part of my outdoor license. And so I don't, I just don't, I don't know where this got off the rails.
I think what, what happened was you didn't disclose those things to us.
Well, I disclosed.
You suggested that you had this other facility, that you would harvest the plants, you had a storage unit and they would be. So I, I think what should happen here is, you know, a storage unit and this activity was not described at the hearing before the DRB. And I think, you know, typically the, the environmental division can't rule on things that were not presented to us, so.
I would present to you that, that H. 270 was passing and things would change, uh, because of this ag exemption. And so I'm bringing in the storage unit to store my outdoor plants. As far as I'm concerned, do I need a permit for that? Because it's ag. I'm growing a farm. You told me I couldn't have any employees and I was planning on doing it with just myself, my fiance and my partner. But now the outdoor portion of my harvest is considered ag, so I could have up to 24 employees for up to 150 days. You know, what I told you was everything I could. And during explanations, you interrupted me and moved on to the next question that you had because you clearly weren't listening. It doesn't matter what I told you. What matters is that these are the laws and the rules being put forward by the CCB and they were ignored in creating those conditions. There's a definition by the CCB of what processing is and that means the packaging and storing cannabis prior to transportation, right? So, um, you put no processing there, but by saying no processing, your state, you're, you're basically telling me I can't do something that's inherent to, um, the production of my product and what's allowed to me by the state license. So I'm not, I'm not trying to.
We're not going to do any processing on stuff. So we're relying on that in issue?
Manufacturing. I'm not doing any manufacturing. I have an off-site to do manufacturing. And so I, I'm not here to, I don't want to fight or argue. I want to save the town money and I want to save myself money. You know, I, there are certain things that the DRB can rule on and that's nuisance. Not anything else. Um, the other thing I wanted to just state is that with the exemptions that I have with ag, I'm growing in a greenhouse and I'm licensing that as indoor, which is what opens the door for this permitting process for that aspect of my business. Having said that, it's a greenhouse. Having said that, it's a greenhouse, which by definition is not a public building, it's an agricultural building. So, there's another weird caveat that's happening here. So, I just don't want the town to impose conditions on that greenhouse that would be any different than what's allowed for my farming aspect, because it, it would feel like that would be a condition that was, would be put forward in bad faith, right? I mean, I have 60 plants there, I could have up to 312. There are two controlled greenhouses, which we have heating for at night, keep them warm, and it's just to grow like a finer product. To treat those outdoor plants growing 15 feet away from those two greenhouses, or have any kind of conditions that are different, just seems a little crazy. And then, having said that, I am totally able to control odor and work with the town in mitigating odor. The lighting thing, I totally, I accept the lighting thing, it's not, it's not an issue for me. I don't want to upset my neighbors, none of my neighbors have stepped forward to challenge this or against this. You know, I saw what your family's holding out here.
This is a discussion of what would, the arguments that would be made before the board.
Right.
It's not, you know, I think the important thing is that a lot of what Mr. Silva plans to do was not articulated, or we, we didn't hear it, and we basically approved and recited what he told us the activity would involve. And did put in some conditions that it sounds like he's largely okay with in terms of maintenance, security, and, I mean, the concern would be that these are very potent cannabis plants, and that, you know, we had in the last couple of years, and we talked about this at the hearing, where there was a growing operation of hemp on Pony Farm Road, and somebody came in the night and cut down all the plants harvested and took off. So, you know, there were conditions in terms of, and again, largely memorializing what Mr. Silva said he would do. So, I mean, I think since he feels the decision is, constrains him, you know, the right thing to do would be to have the matter remanded back to the board, so he can come back in, and we can better understand what he needs to do, and consider, you know, that under the ordinance.
I just want to elaborate...
Things we can consider. I mean, if, if it's true, the law's changed, and some of the activities protected agricultural activity, which zoning largely does not regulate, that may have changed the rules since we heard the application back in, was it late April?
April 20th, actually.
Yeah. That's what you were talking about that.
The, and then, and I, I'm just not aware, but I don't, is security considered nuisance, or is that something else? You know, I'm totally aware of, I'm conscious of not bothering my neighbors. You know, at the meeting, tons of questions were asked, like, what are my lease conditions? And, you know, how do I have a renewal option? Things that I felt just had nothing to do with the meeting, but everything I've stated here tonight was supplement to my application by the zoning administrator. And she accepted my application, stated as such, and, you know, consulted with the, with the DRB on almost everything I'm speaking about, except for the ag exemption. I warned the DRB multiple times that, you know, just to not overdo it, because they're limited by state law on what they can impose on me. And I have no issues with doing things that deal with nuisance, but something as contractual as saying that I cannot dry, store, or process cannabis, given the language of the state law for cannabis, is just a non-starter. And, you know, I'm sure the judge is going to see it the same way, the CCB already has, because they're issuing me my license on Monday.
You had told us you were not going to be doing any drying or storing of product on stuff.
But I, I have to, I have to though.
If things have changed, you, you didn't, you didn't tell us that. So, and for your business purposes, you need to engage in those activities, or maybe it's exempt under state law. I, I mean, I think the board...
It's tricky, and I want to work with the town. It's exempt under state law for all my outdoor plants. It's not exempt under state law for the greenhouse operation, right? But the reality, they're 50/50. So, it's, it's, it would be strange for, for us to have a discussion where there are impositions put on half of my harvest and not the other half, just because of this weird language of me having lights and heating in there so I can have a prolonged harvest, falls into indoor category. That's it. Last year, when I was, in April, outdoor tier one, which is 125 outdoor plants, that is exempt as ag. This year, they extended that to all outdoor and mixed tiers. So, the outdoor tiers and outdoor aspects of mixed tiers, which is what I have, I have a mixed indoor and outdoor. The greenhouses are indoor, the outdoors outdoor. I'm only growing one-fifth of my limitation, and, you know, I just, I want to succeed. I'm renting expenses.
So, John, you ready to... Yeah, so how do we get this back in front of you and get all the other parts?
Just as I mentioned in the other case, it's really up to the board at this point, but, you know, I think if the, the town enters an appearance and participates in the, you know, ultimately, council is going to be responsive to what the board wants to do. But, you know, if, based on input from council and the town, you know, is supportive of running a remanded matter, so these other activities can be considered, that might be very clear out. But it's really up to you folks.
All right, folks around the table, you've heard the story here tonight, what's your thoughts?
Well, first of all, I mean, we need to have more information about H. 270 and whether in fact it is exempt. Outdoor, I can certainly understand as agriculture, indoor, not so much. I think there should be conditions on it, basically, if it's an indoor operation, it warrants different considerations.
Well, it's a greenhouse.
Well, it's a greenhouse with lights and heating.
Right.
So, if you're using...
But it's, it's, I just, it's, I've had this discussion with the fire marshal, and it's just, it's not a public building, right? So, that's, that's also something I just want everyone to consider. It's just that, like, I can't do certain things that you could do for a public building. So, it has a chain link fence, which allows me to create, creates a border.
Right.
And then I have gates that have central alarm system security. I also have all the cameras, and I have a blue siren over at the house, so if anyone breaks the security system, it looks like the cops for them. I just, I just want to, just to make sure everyone has the information, you know. I totally agree with you that if it was, if it is as indoor, it should be regulated, you know? And lighting and stuff, lighting, odor, anything that has to do with nuisance is like what's allowed, right? So, and I have no problems meeting those conditions and doing what it takes to keeping the town satisfied with that.
So, why don't we... Pardon me. John, did you have anything else to say?
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like there's a lot of misunderstanding, and so I think that we should, you know, be allowed to coach for the board.
All right, what we need to do is, we'll have Ron involve Ron, who can reach out to you, John.
I don't think, you know, I think Ron should, we're the DRB, I mean, I've kind of passed along my thoughts. You know, we, like I said, in connection with Bliss Ridge, we're presented with an application, we hold a hearing, we ask some questions, we try to review the materials, and make a decision. And then, really, we've done our role in the process. And certainly, the way this plays out, instead of trying to try a case in the Environmental Division, it came back to us, like I said earlier, that, from, you know, my personal perspective and my, I'm just wondering, that might be a good way to move the thing forward without excess expense and time for all the parts.
All right, so Mr. Silva, our attorney will reach out to you, or your attorney?
Mr. Silva's represented by Lainoa.
Okay. So, Ron will reach out to your attorney, similar as what we've been doing, working with Bliss Ridge. We will work with you to facilitate permit and try to get all the information, get the latest laws, and work out something that works, melt for both parties.
Totally, and just, just while we, while I brought up the storage unit, the reason I wanted to use the storage unit was to store the product during the short term, so that I could take it to my manufacturing facility in Limson. So, I'm looking at what they call a reefer box, incidentally, which is a fully insulated, sealed box that I can climate control to store any product. And it's, you know, that will also have cameras that record for 30 days, as required by the CCB. So, just to put that on your radar.
All right, we certainly appreciate you willing to do those things. We'll look at the appeal, we'll look at what you're appealing, and we will figure out how to work with you on those issues.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
John, is there anything else?
No, not for me.
All right. Yeah, happy holidays as well, happy holiday, I know we've had a holiday coming up here. Folks, did you have...
We have some misunderstandings we'd like to clear up. John, if you want...
Well, I can sprint for a few minutes, yeah. But I don't think you're, there's, like I said earlier, there's a decision the board made that's been appealed to the Environmental Division.
Just that things also have come up, actually, kind of similarly. We were told by a different, told about a different category that our business fits into, since we originally applied for the single-family dwelling, because that was the only category that the zoning administrator could come up with as like a, okay, this is what we're...
But I think, again, I, it's kind of the DRB listened to the evidence, and we made a decision, and I think our work is done on that matter, and then there's the notice of violation, which was issued, which we didn't, but the appeal from that is to our board. So, I think it really should be in the context of that appeal and a more in-public hearing.
Well, that, we're hoping, like, that that doesn't have to take place, because we've now been working for 15 months towards a resolution, and we were told to get a lawyer, and so we've had a lawyer since, since the DRB meeting.
And the town has a lawyer, and the lawyers should talk, and it shouldn't be, I shouldn't be in that conversation.
Okay, it's just that things have, all right, and things have changed since your decision, and also, there were errors, like, at play there, that I think kind of screwed things up, and so, there's been a lot of misunderstandings since then, and so, it just seemed like, I said, well, can I just go to the meeting and explain? And then our attorney said, oh, there's no point, because it's not in the hands of the Select Board, and then it's, this has been going on and on and on. And our attorney says, it's really, like, Ron is so busy right now that it's hard to even get in touch with him, so it's like, it's literally been 15 months, and we've had, never had any intention of not complying, and we're just like, it's the most stressful experience ever, because we're like, okay, we'll do anything that we need to do. Oh, look, here's the accessory on front business, this is what we are, here are the requirements. And so, the zoning administrator accepted all of that, and so now, there's only, and she said, the DRB said there was no road frontage, but there is road frontage, so that's, you know, that takes away this entire argument that there's a setback issue within the property. So, that now, the only issue that's standing in the way of our permit is the stream that's marked on only the USGS map that is in the town office, but the A and R maps do not classify any surface water on the property at all, and so, they gave us our wastewater permit, and we followed the septic design, which puts the septic tanks where they are, and they're not 50 feet from that surface water, yet we're still fighting about the treehouse being too close to a stream that's not, not a stream, or a drainage, but it is classified as surface water. So, that's the one issue that's now standing in the way of our permit.
We wanted to, for a moment, just resolve one treehouse, because there's one treehouse that's not completely, it doesn't have a stream issue, there's no setback, there's no issue, right? So, we wanted to just kind of divide the two and try to obtain a permit for that, and then deal with this...
Our attorney advised us to do that, so then we, frantically spent, you know, staying up past midnight, fill out a new application, we think, okay, at least we can finish construction while we're waiting for this issue to be resolved with the stream.
Because we're in court.
And then, our attorney told us to do that, and then I emailed Karen, and she's, oh, I'm so sorry, but I'm not allowed to accept a permit for this treehouse, because it's already on an existing application, even though everybody acknowledges that that makes no sense. So, now, we're stuck, and it's...
Weeks and weeks and weeks keep going by.
And just, the money is just being, I mean, we've spent money that we don't have absolutely
We're getting to the point where we don't even know if having a lawyer is beneficial, and maybe we shouldn't have had him, because the amount of time and effort that Jordan has put forth to communicate to a lawyer, to communicate to the town, which is just...
To Ron, to then communicate to the town, and then the battle, and then it takes weeks and weeks and weeks.
And she might as well just be hindsight, she's...
It's just a little misunderstanding that we would like to clear up, it just seems so over the top. We have no intention of doing anything wrong. We got a state wastewater permit, we thought that that was it, we have no foundation. We have, our structure does not affect the surface water in any way. And then, we have this logistical issue with the zoning regulation, and the problem is that the state maps are different than the one town map that they use. It's not, it's not a geological issue, it's not about protecting the stream, there's no stream, it's a seasonal runoff that goes by one of our structures.
And we have a neighbor who just keeps coming in to bug the town, again...
Well, we have a neighbor who's harassed us for 13 years for things that don't exist. He calls state authorities and has them come out and say, and then they see that we're not doing what he said that they were doing, and they apologize, and they're like, so it's like an ongoing issue that, that one, we don't know how to resolve, but we've got some suggestions.
But we've a lot of ideas, if you got any, because this is getting...
It's scary.
Well, as John mentioned earlier, you folks have attorney, our attorney, Ron, and I know I speak with him on a weekly basis, or something, a couple times a week, I'm trying to work with you to figure this thing out. No one here in the town government that is trying to thwart things or slow things down. You know, we're just going through the process, unfortunately, you know, once you get into the court system, things take longer, and probably are, you know, does not really come as usual a lot of times, or such going on. Like I said, you've got the second one, you're trying to permit on it, you can't, because it's, it's, because it's in litigation now, and the other one, and that's why the zoning administrator can't do anything with it. But I know, based on my conversations with Ron, to me, it seemed like you were, you were towards the end of the trail here. We were working with the federal government on the stream issue, is my only understanding is really what's holding you back at this point, is, is just that stream issue, is that correct?
That's correct, but that's been correct since, for always, it's just that we didn't know about the accessory on front business category until Ron suggested it.
Right, and that's why we're trying to get it out.
And that was in April, and so we filled out everything ready, and got that all sorted out.
Yeah, I'd like to excuse myself.
Yes, yeah, that's why I'm trying to get it out of here.
Our DRB has jurisdiction over that LAV appeal, these are things that, you know, and, and your matter may come before our board again, and if it does, you know, we'll do what we're supposed to do in terms of listening to evidence and points.
Thanks, John, I appreciate that, so I'm trying to get you out of here, I know you're cringing, because you, you don't want to break law or what you're supposed to hear and you're not hearing. And as I mentioned, I work with Ron closely, we're trying to help, you know, figure this out for you. It is, it is, it's different, there's not a lot of case law with it, or such to do it, but again, and that's why Ron brought up the home ag issue, trying to find a solution, you know?
And then we were, like, great, but, you know, there were mistakes in the DRB decision, like, regardless of that, of that, you know, that accessory on front business, obviously, that's a very fitting, that is what we have always done, we just didn't know that there was a formal category for it, so that was certainly helpful, and then, and then our attorney said, great, now that we have that sorted out, just let's fill out a single application so that you can at least finish your one structure, and, you know.
Right, or, again, I'll call Ron tomorrow, see if there's anything on our, and that we need to be doing what I think, based on my last conversation with him, that it was really holding, the stream issue was something that...
The stream, but we don't know what to do, because we can't move the stream, it just doesn't show up as a stream on the state maps.
We have information how to move the stream.
Wait, like...
Yeah, that would be a good idea, yeah.
No, but it's not a stream, though.
It's not a stream, the only place, it's a runoff, it's dry most of the year, it's like, it's shocking that it's considered a stream.
Why the town can't give an exemption to that?
The state maps say that it's not a stream.
The state says it's not a stream.
They put our septic projects with it.
There's no stream on it, and they gave us these wastewater permits with literally the septic tanks very close to the stream, and lines, water lines and septic lines going underneath.
Because it's not a stream. It's dry, the only time that, yeah, it's rough, and it's runoff, it's a dry, it's...
And there's the foundation, which there, there isn't really, these things are hanging fifteen feet in the trees.
They don't affect the...
So they don't affect any stream, right? So it's just like, I know what you said, sometimes it's like, you can't really look at a logical...
No, it's hard, and, and, you know, and our, you know, there's more than one person in town that questions what's going on, too, so just don't feel like there's...
Well, that's what we're really confused about, because that neighbor has a history of going around and telling people things that are not true, and getting people angry, and then when we find out about it...
Or anyone else.
We go and clear that, that person.
You guys know it's on the backside of our property, up against Doug Gill, and they are all A-OK with it.
Nobody can see us, it does not, there's no noise.
When the leaves are off, you can see it from the road.
In November.
Right.
But it's, it's a tiny spell.
Right, I mean, there's, there's houses that are way closer to ruin, way more...
I would love to hear, I, I just cannot imagine how anybody could possibly say that anything that we're doing is affecting their life. The weddings, okay, we've been through everything for our events business, we, we monitor sound on a regular basis, we are like, that is tight, and that is a totally different business, and we have taken every precaution, and the only person that's ever complained about that is the same person, and then he will go and he will tell his girlfriend to file a complaint, or his friend to file a complaint.
The other thing is, these treehouses, the one treehouse that, you know, we have rented for the past couple of years, I mean, I don't need to get into like, you know, mushy gushy, but people just so appreciative and love it.
Our parents come there to babysit our kids, our, our family comes there to be...
Make a wish, I get that, I wanted to vote for them, but we're like, all right, it's the town, and then we can't use it, so...
But we, I, I hope that is...
The Make-A-Wish, we got the...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I...
We also have a few other people who were trying to stay, that had won the treehouse stay in a cherry auction, we've done nonprofit auctions, we do nonprofit fundraisers, and we offer the treehouse as a prize, like a big prize, and it's like, so we have a couple people that are waiting to use that stay, and, you know, we have wedding guests that, or wedding clients that wanted to use the treehouse as a day use to save their thousand, and now I'm like, sorry, tough to change your whole wedding plan, because...
Again, we're trying to, if you have the special issues, such as the Make-A-Wish, have your lawyer contact Ron, Ron will talk to me and work with you on these things. Again, we're not, we're trying to navigate this to, to make it, at the end of the day, that everyone is, is happy.
I totally agree.
And just understand, don't feel like you're alone, there's, I've been on the board I did twelve years now, and I will never understand neighbors. I mean, John's been on here for thirty seven years, he can probably tell you the same thing, I, I just, simple things, you know, I just, it's not, there's, and you just don't understand it, and so you don't try to, you know, I just ask you to continue to go through the, the process. And we will work with you through the process, and, you know, we'll try to do it as painless for all, and we don't want to be important, we don't want to put some kind of business, just like Mr. Silver, we're not.
So do you guys, do you guys have a sense of, you know, so we're not compliant, so we're going to be like, getting fined for not being compliant? I'm just kind of wondering...
We'll pay twelve thousand dollars to the lawyer.
What that is, and, you know, if we're still not in compliance, like, is this depending on what we do moving forward without a permit? Are we going to be getting like, a bitter fine?
Well, the idea is that you stop renting it and stop building, is that correct?
Right.
A long time, we lost our whole season.
Exactly.
And after, after DRB decision that said it was non-compliant, it wasn't, that's when we really should look at, so look at you, you can't do that, as much as we'd love to have you up there entertaining people, doing things, you can't kind of thumb your nose up at the, at the town DRB and say, well, you know what, we're gonna do it anyways. Well, I'm just, that's how compliance...
We're like, we are not trying to just like, we can't have...
There's my pride, there's nothing...
Right, so that's, so we're not looking to go forward and, we're not looking for money here, we, we're, yes, there, I have worked with Ron, trying to figure something out, I mean, the fines can be a hundred dollars per incident, per day, so you could, you could have thousands of dollars worth of fines, that ain't gonna be, so don't go home tonight and think that's...
The lawyer fees.
Right, that'll be a lot more than your, something here. Again, we're trying to figure this out, work with you, not put you in the, you know, rears and such, and as a select board, we can only do so much anyways, it's what it gets to the courts, and there's DRB, I mean, they're, it's their decision, it's not our decision. I mean, we're, now it's finally coming to us, where we can try to bake in market...
I guess the part that's so hard is that, I mean, the whole thing is wild, seems like full of misunderstanding, but the hardest thing is that, like, they made, there were mistakes in the decision, and then we don't have an opportunity to explain that, and then like, you know, a random neighbor makes a complaint, and probably thought, if there's another person, I will guarantee that that neighbor called that person and told them something.
No, and then we're not in compliance, and then we have to appeal it and, you know, pay three hundred dollars.
Because of one person.
Then we're screwed, moving forward.
One person who has a history of being mentally...
What happened, I mean, whatever, three hundred dollars is like, not that much compared to all that we, but still, it's just slap in the face.
We're gonna interrupt you for a minute here, I have a question. If, if I don't like something, and I come and complain to the zoning administrator that so-and-so is doing something, and it's not even true, then the zoning administrator can make a complaint out and come, and then, and then...
And you gotta pay us, and pay your money.
That person has to pay three hundred dollars to prove their innocence.
Twelve thousand to a lawyer?
No, I'm talking about the latest, the three hundred dollar fine to prove their innocent on a claim that was absolutely not true, and it seems to me that that's a little backwards, that if that claim was an absolute, out of the blue, total not true thing, then why should I have to pay to prove myself innocent of that claim?
I don't understand.
It's the latest...
So the barriers we appealed, and what was the violation, was because you were building and renting?
Oh, we weren't, we haven't been for fifteen months. I guess it's, since we've known about, or since the DRB decision, decision came out, the thing, we haven't gone anywhere.
It's sitting there saying, why is that line, I couldn't even go up and check the mousetrap, is how we haven't done it.
Yeah, we feel like...
I did go up twice and checked the mousetrap, after I realized that that might really not be a good thing to do.
I went on there to take pictures for the lawyer today, and I said, and I was like, I don't even want to be here, I feel like...
And again, I don't know, there were, there were complaints in here, and then the zoning administrator investigated the complaints.
Then...
Right.
She saw my dad's treehouse facing, she posted on Instagram, and thought that it was our treehouses.
She thought we were building a treehouse while we're not in the treehouse?
No, she thought that was ours, but it's not, it's not on this thing here.
So we're like, really? Okay, how about we ask, like, what's going on, and not just take it, whoever's word for fact? So that's why we're kind of like, ah, this doesn't seem, that's why we're here.
Well, also, the DRB said that they were going to call us and come up for a site visit after the meeting if they had further questions, and they never called, and I was calling saying, why is this decision taking so long? No news is good news, and then we got the decision in the mail, and we were like, oh, okay, well, there's all these mistakes in here, too, that's not true, this lot does have road frontage, now we're stuck, paying for a lawyer, we don't, that's, you know, we have, the neighbor just made a noise complaint about our other business, and we haven't even had an event yet.
Yeah, I hadn't even had an event, and there was a noise complaint, so I came down here, like, uh, how, don't you have to actually have like an event, like some noise to complain about? No, but it was a historical complaint, so then she has to ask for all the dates that we have events, fun.
Yeah, I, I saw those, I like, question this one.
Tom, Tom's insane, we understand, we know how the neighbors are, and we know, in the past, you've done everything right, and so we shouldn't get any problems going forward.
That's what, and that, it just is shocking to me that anybody could say that, have a complaint about a treehouse, I was like, no, there's some kind of mistake, they, there's no way that anyone could say that that affects their life in any way, that nobody can see them, nobody can hear them.
No, we knew it was talking about the events, you know, anything.
No, the noise was the events, but what he, Tom was saying, that somebody else besides that one neighbor complained about the treehouses, and I'm like, how? We have people coming to the farm all the time, for site visits, for wedding events, for friends, I mean, there's like, it's, there's people, but it, I, I don't know.
Right, and people just, you know, may call in, or give us the, just because, like you said, they may not know all the facts, and we, we get what we get. But as I mentioned earlier, you know, we're really trying to work with you, trying to figure this out, and working with Ron, who's working with your lawyer, you know, again, that's, and Ron's working hard at it, trying to figure out how to make this fit into the, into the bylaws and constraints that we have here.
I just thought, oh, Ron used to be the head of the A and R, and he'll understand, like, he'll figure out the math issue, because how is it that the town and the state maps are not aligned, that just seems crazy? So, okay, where the town says that this is a stream, the state says, no, there's no streams here, put your septic tank right here.
Well, I think that's kind of stuff that would probably go back to Jonathan DRB, that's why he doesn't want to hear it in this arena, so that they can make those decisions.
It's just a timeline.
But you guys don't know, but it's just like, yeah, so what does that mean, like, where are we going, back to the DRB? How many weeks are we going to keep folding the calendar over and be like, okay, well, it's like the end of the season, and, yeah, like, yeah, just having to shut stuff around, it's, it's more, it's biggest, not, not only is it financial, but it's stressing, you guys don't hear it, probably, like...
But, you know, we, since you started your, your business, I know there was issues with the liquor permits, you know, a few years ago when you were starting, and I know that before, at that point, again, we're trying to do everything we can to make sure we, we got you the permits, so it's, it's not...
There was never an issue with any permits, the only issue that we found with the events business is that one neighbor at the beginning, and the town said that we could increase our events from ten events to fifteen, and he didn't like that, so he appealed it and took us to State Environmental Court, and then we went through mediation, and came to an agreement, and then he wanted to remake our mediation agreement, rescind the agreement, and so we got to call for the attorney, and then we had to be in court, and that whole thing's on the line, if you want to read about that.
Anyway, we've been supportive, we'll continue to be, but we're just trying to help you figure out the process, and I'm sorry it's taking longer than what you would like.
Is there any timeline, I mean, Ron's really busy, but what do you think?
I think it's, again...
So it's Ron, and then it's back to the DRB, we think, or just Ron, and it's done?
He told us one to two weeks on May fifteenth, Ron told us our hair.
Well, I think that right now, Ron and their lawyer are, have been in negotiation process, if you will, and I think that will be sufficient for the court, and because the court just wants people to figure it out, they don't want to make decisions or separate the present, that's why they're always looking for mediation, and that's my understanding, basically, what we've, we've actually been doing, we're just mediating between the two lawyers, and, and a lot of that is looking like, all right, how do we figure this out, where does this go under, that's why it was our attorney's suggestion, well, maybe if we put it in, try to have business, there's a way for this to work.
Then I called the agency of act, and the lady was really nice, and she listened to the whole thing, she said, unfortunately, it's not under jurisdiction to make any type of variance, but the town can, town can make a variance, the town can make an exception for this, and I was like, oh, well, I don't, doesn't seem like they know that.
Yeah, that very, you know, typically, the towns are not the ones that are able to make variances on federal law, if it's the stream they're talking about.
That's, she said that towns do it all the time, she said that for accessory on front businesses, if the structure contains humans instead of animals, that's how she put it, then it's not under their jurisdiction, but the town is, the town can do a variance, is what she said, Mary, Mary Martin.
Well, I will certainly ask Ron if he's been discussing that with your lawyer, if it's something that we can do, and in fact, it is a, just a runoff, then certainly we're going to, again, going to work with, you know, I don't know what else to say, we've been trying to, as soon as I get a call, I respond to it, trying to get back, so that you folks can move things along, so the board hasn't been sitting on anything, in fact, I come in and let the board know, basically, what, how we proceeded in the last couple weeks, rather than wait two weeks, ask me if it's okay to say, you know, can I listen, you know, so it's not, you know, we're trying to use common sense and trying to move it forward.
Do you have a copy of, so the appeal is basically, did you have a copy of this?
I don't know, right, so...
It's like, it says, you know, we are hopeful that this is not necessary, but they had, but our lawyer said, you have to do that, because in case there's some type of, you know, issue with the discussions, then you'll lose your rights.
Right.
We don't do that, so we have to do it, but we want to do it, we don't want that to happen, so he's like, let's hope that we can come to a resolution before that is even necessary.
No, and, and I, I'll bring this up to Ron, maybe, maybe there is time, so we don't have to appeal it, and there's other evidence as well, that you have, as far as...
Dry stream then?
Well, not that so much.
Dry stream now.
The fines and such, or the reason you're, you're appealing is because of the fine, because of the usage and continuing building, is that correct?
The violation, right, but I think that understanding, our attorney said, I think that the reason why she had to actually do the, know of, is so that we had something to resolve for the settlement agreement to refer to, which is, yeah.
To, to appeal, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, we want to appeal, but like, something that we could settle.
Right, something, yeah.
In writing, yeah, so then we were, then we're like, okay, we, he, and he's, you know, he explained, or we, we explained, I said, so, mine was like four sentences long, and he's like, yeah, that's it, but I'm gonna add some more information, so, like, we, we cured the problem by not constructing and not having guests, so I emailed Karen initially saying, do you consider us to have cured the problem, because we, we don't have the power to give ourselves a permit, that's what we're going for, but we thought that would be done, but no, and so we don't actually want to...
I think the difficult part is, you know, to overcome is the construction without the permit, and typically, that's processes, you get a permit, and then you do the construction.
Right.
So we're kind of backwards on that process.
No, totally, we, yeah, what we're there.
For us.
And then I thought, well, there are examples in town of people who've done that.
There is, yeah. You know, first.
We didn't know that we needed that permit, so we were told, we were told that we didn't. And we went to the state, and one would think, I think that most people think, one would think that if they're going to the state to get the wastewater permit, that is what you need to be ecologically on point, then you get that. And they would mention, oh, there's something else that you need to do. Or our map is completely different than your town, you better check with them. No, they just said, here you go, looks great.
So. So you do have a full wastewater permit?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. When you were told you didn't need a permit for, because it was like.
It was no foundation, no structural interruption to the landscape, basically. There's no, no setback issue. It's in the tree, tree's already there.
I don't know, wait, yeah, I got a letter, because I built a treehouse for my grandkids. They said it was more than twelve feet tall, so I said fifty foot in there.
Oh, the height isn't an issue.
No. Apparently wasn't mine. Your mind is no longer there.
Oh, no.
Take mine down.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so we're gonna avoid that, we're gonna avoid that problem.
Oh, no. Yes, but the height, that's one thing that they didn't say. The D R B said that it was a setback issue from the neighbor's property, but it's not, because that lot has frontage. And they didn't, you know, respect somehow. And then it's not, yeah, frontage issues.
I'm sure we'll be able to come to a solution on this, it's a delightful treehouse.
Yeah, I, I, again, we're.
You're all welcome to come. Use it, again. We'll have a party, we'll have a treehouse party.
Yeah, random and.
Oh, yeah.
Well, thank you, kind of, uh, sharing your feelings and what's going on. And we'll work, um, and working with our attorney to, to try to figure it out with your attorney to, to get it done.
Thank you. I just, I just, like, I like our attorney as a person, but I just kind of, I'm wondering, that he's helping, like, I just I can't afford to. So if you were to just not have a attorney all of a sudden, how does that work?
Then, um, our attorney would just work with you.
Okay. All right, I'll do that.
I mean, you have that happen sometimes, something where.
Your attorney brought it far enough, then you feel like you could just world it out?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think he's done much that I don't have done. I just thought, the amount of stress that we have otherwise, I thought.
The times that she has spent researching and getting information into all the bits and pieces and throwing it to Peter has just been like, oh my God, this is real.
Well, the reason why we got him is because we don't have any time.
Right, but maybe he's in for it, right? Yeah, so it's like, I'm, we're just.
Like, maybe you've got something on the rear, yeah.
I'm just like, it doesn't make sense, me as lawyer, it doesn't make any sense.
Have faith, it'll be resolved.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, vibe is good.
I think I have to with, uh, upon me to tell you that your wife had a profound impact on her education. Her favorite teacher.
Oh, is that right?
So her name is Bryn, and she just like.
This is hoping, what's, what's her, her name?
Bryn Ballard.
Bryn Ballard?
Yeah, she just saw your name here, and, and she was like, oh my God. But this is a lot, like, you know, thanks for your great advice, like, um.
Okay, good night, thanks for coming.
Ruth had a profound effect on my children too.
I'm sure your mind is.
I'm not sure if it was good or bad, but it was profound anyways.
Yeah, I know, my kids still, for sure.
All right, so everything you've heard, um, as I've said to the, uh, Von Trapps, uh, and this is, uh, Jenkins, Jenkins, thank you. Um, you know, I'm working with Ron, he's trying to help these people figure it out. Um, you know, I'm not sure, it doesn't sound like their attorney, that is, or they're happy with their attorney, if that's nothing to do with us. Um, and no one's trying to push people through stuff that they might shouldn't be doing. I mean, really, um, Ron, again, Ron came up with, you know, this is a where, this is where we can put this.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's unprecedented, renting out treehouses, and so there's.
Yeah.
You need to be regulated.
It's a little unique, so it's, it's a tough set, you know, it's a tough thing.
It's a tough thing, so, um, I see a solution in the, in the works. Um, but it might be, you know, it's not gonna happen tomorrow to.
Yeah, I, no, I think we can get there, I'm hoping.
Uh, hopefully we can get there, let's see. We didn't have a chance to talk really much about the, uh, G H R enterprises, but it is one of those businesses that certainly is, is needed in our community, or certainly around in the area. Um, they seem like nice gentlemen. Um, so, you know, with the next, between now and July tenth, or towards, uh, July, uh, our meeting, if people could take, um, know you're on your bike, John, take a ride out that way, just see if you see improvements.
Yeah, a lot of chance on a weekly basis.
And.
They did fill it, the worst, the worst one they did, that was something temporary.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with the temporary, you know? It's to fix the fence they got there, there's no reason not to, you know? You can go in with some fricking sheet metal nails and horrible pieces of stuff and get something up. Is it gonna look great? You know, look super great, they can hammer it out, they can make it presentable. It's not.
Right.
It's crap falling down, you know?
No, I just also remember the, the previous.
Weed whacking, brush hogging, you know?
Just going by and looking at the open gate to the entrance of the house on the left, and
Right.
all around there was.
Yeah, like a war zone, yeah. All, all of them.
I don't know how they, they, they.
Now that we're talking about the fence, I'm more than willing to stop in there and, and, and talk to them and say, you know, hey, and a couple.
No, I've seen the reason why people, you know, and see, mentioned, uh.
Cause I, I use them as a resource myself, so when I got scrap metal, I bring it down there. I don't want to drive all the way to fricking bulbups and.
Yeah, and, uh, what's the, give us an insurance, a sureness?
Yeah.
That you'll build a fence by next spring or something like that.
Yeah, and you say, is there, he wants to clean up that area that you discussed, you know, and you make a better fence even, though. People don't know that.
Right. Um, Sasha, you got anything for us?
Uh, Sean, but my attention that there needs to be a replacement for Ray on the stormwater project.
Place is probably Ray on the stormwater project, because Ray is the clerk of the work, or for the house. John, I find you're doing that.
Yeah, I can do that.
Is it, there's supposed to be two people, or?
I thought Sherwin is another person.
Oh, no, no.
I don't, I don't, no, for the sideboard, you need anybody else?
Okay, all right, I'll let her know then.
Yeah, you're shirking duties already, John.
That's all I have.
Look, look at that, Ray designed it.
Um. Yes, is it you or stuff?
Uh, no, I don't have anything new.
Don, what you got? But we just, you've been on, I meant to check on you.
No, that's good, that's good. Uh, I was just wondering, uh, the speed trailer, so we're just moving that around town.
Well, it's in Sherwin's house now, so I don't know how long, I don't leave it there, but it's been, it probably.
So it's on the river now?
It's on the river, right in front of our house.
Flashing, yeah.
Yeah, it's flashing me every time I drive on my own.
You gotta slow down.
Uh, I, I wouldn't recommend, recommendation, maybe it's time to move it, it doesn't need to be there permanently.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so maybe.
How many weekends?
He's been leaving it at collection, he says, time was lost.
Okay. Yeah, we may want to shorten that off, I know it's kind of a pain to move, it's like, oh, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Sasha.
Stefan's been moving it around, until we got the plates for the trailer. He's been moving it around to different parts of town for like two weeks, he's let it sit there. And I just had the plate last week, so.
You know, seven, yeah, whatever, a week and a half, week or something like that.
I mean, it's a great location from our perspective on our part.
But I like it, like, um, Pony Farm Road, Geolick Benefit, and other places.
A lot of places.
Yeah, there is, I.
Yeah, that one, right, and the corner there.
No, are we giving, are we giving it to the, the, uh, the, uh, the data, or giving it to the?
Yeah, transportation, or sheriff's department or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all forward.
Cool.
And while you were, the flashing sign.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, I gave it a fuck, yeah, that's good.
That's, uh. Yeah, that's a good spot for it.
Yeah.
No, no.
No, I think that was, uh, I think a good decision. It was too, it was sending it down, you know, it was leaving town.
But sometimes either with the trailer, we could put it back here in town, you know, and by the fire station, just to remind people, yeah, you know?
Or come on the other side, or come in town.
Yeah, right around the next one. Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I'd like to see it utilized most for pedestrians, but then I think about it, the river road, we have so many bikers and so many runners and so many pedestrians, and now that's actually a very, very good place.
That's a main route.
Yeah. Do you have some?
Um, just something that, um, I don't have a lot of details on, just to, to think about. Um, Corey was working on trying to get some more details back, but I would just like to know about is that there's someone who's interested in renting, uh, the town all on a long-term basis, you know, like, uh, I think it's weekly to, um, have martial arts classes or something. And he has, you know, he has insurance, and, um, so, no, stay tuned, no details yet. And Corey, you know, they're immediately talking about what the criteria would need to be, and what needs, how it can be set up, and you know, who would be responsible for what, this, that, and everything, but, you know, could be a, could be a good thing.
Right, I'm sorry. Just keep it close going, I mean, library, books, further demonstrations.
Corey's gonna be, maybe the next meeting, she'll ask for more details to the July tenth meeting.
Great.
So.
Any luck on her cleaning position?
Well, she's got the add up, I, she has the, I don't think she's heard.
Yeah, I asked about a bunch of cleaning companies that work for my son and stuff, and it was, it was a tough sell.
Don, have you, have you been working with the, um, uh, library trustees at all, any of that, have you worked with them?
Hmm, not so much, I, I mean, a while ago, I, I went to meet, I haven't been doing it recently, I was still with, actually, with the friends or something.
Yeah, because one of things come up, it kind of bothers me a little bit. Um, oh, six, eight weeks ago, Sherman had asked, um, trustees about donations, wanted to know about their accounting and what they have. Um, and they have, uh, essentially said no. Or, 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 they're not showing it, it's not showing it with us, and, um.
I don't think it's the trustees, it would be the friends.
The friends, yeah, and, uh, it is a town library. Um, the first time she asked, it's, you know, it was just blown off, it's, well, you know, the money's being spent on great things, you know, like the walk, or things that we have, which I think we'd all fully agree, it is nice. Um, and she said, because it is a town library, we need to report certain recordings, and.
Also, just have an accounting.
Right, an accounting, it's all been warned. And then, um, they came back with, well, we have the friends that are five-oh-one-two, they're on private, um, organization. So basically, stuff it. And, um, quite frankly, that doesn't.
Well, I'm sure they didn't say stuff.
They didn't say stuff, but, uh, close to it.
No, right?
They said, this is the, this is what we are, and, no, you're not, you're not sharing, you, what, what we have for our finances. And, you know, we work with the library, the friends, and, and the trustees, I think, as much, if not more than any group here in town. And to have them just basically.
Well, maybe.
You know, although, I'm sure you mean, I, I think that's, you know, I, to me, it's a little petty. Uh, I'm not looking to, uh, to spend their money, I just think it's, you know, what, just like we have with the fire department.
Yeah, keep the books.
You know, we want to know what, you know, what you're doing.
They took it in the hand.
Uh, we, you know, what's our budget for the library, forty thousand or more? You know, if they just want to do private stuff, they can have at it, but.
Well, no, let me, so, let me assess it out a little bit.
Yeah, you're talking, and asking with the problems.
Yeah, okay. Could be just a misunderstanding.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. Um, we also had a complaint, or a few different complaints, uh, most recently this morning, uh, from, um, I can't remember his name, but he's on Route Two, uh, about this, the, um, rest area over there, people camping.
People camping again?
People camping, so, it's a town on Route Two, that rest area on Route Two. Right, right.
Why you just, I was, I.
Yeah, I went, I went, I didn't know this, I just noticed how, how they maintained it.
Yeah.
The station during that.
Yeah, so, we've filed, we've, we've, uh, pushed off complaints to that, just the state believes that's, that's their deal. Um, but Sasha, can you, or does anyone know who we should reject, probably District over here, that state worries? Because like you said, it is, it's not maintained.
No, no. No. I.
I thought that thing got all cleared out, because remember there was, it was a little dicey there a few years ago.
Yes.
And then I thought the state came in and like cleared everything out of there, it didn't make it like a rest area anymore, because it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, there's only like one cake table now or something.
But I think there's, I think there's more than one, but, but, and there's a sign, you know, that shows that it's a picnic area.
Yeah, right.
And it's, it's got a sign that says.
Oh, still now?
Yeah, yeah, I have a cake table.
Because I thought they closed it down a few years ago, maybe.
Well, they, they wanted it to close at one point, because they were, remember those tall, it was all tall, tall vines, or tall, tall vines?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they cleaned that up, but I, I know, I know.
No, no, there was, there was a lot of stuff going on back in the day.
Right.
Right, and so, um, if you could find out who we should reach out to, the, uh, talk about maintenance of that area? John is here.
I spoke with, um, Ray, um, on the sidewalk, he sent it, um, I guess Joe Gabbrey was gonna give an estimate or something.
On the sidewalk, okay.
Yeah, and he, he never did. So, uh, Ray's gonna go back to, uh, Jeff, uh. It's a new, yes, um, and, um, because he offered to write a check for a thousand dollars. So he's gonna go back to him and see if that offer still stands.
Yeah.
To fix it? With that?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it would probably be more than that.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would imagine. And, um, I also, I spoke with him at, on the crosswalk, and he said, you know, uh, actually, I'll get him, uh, forward to him the, uh, you know, the shows, uh, the diagram and everything.
Um, yes.
Yeah, and, and Thursday morning, we're having our kickoff, get the stormwater, so, uh, he, he said that we'll talk about it, and so.
We're talking with, uh.
Right.
Ray what?
Yeah, what I, I said is just, just give us a ballpark of what it costs, if you could.
To do, to rework the, this side and build what they think.
Right.
Instead of what first action, it's all sort of, you know, more temporary, but then Ed came along and said, no.
No.
Ed cares, whatever, so. So to actually build a concrete ramp and everything, and close up the side.
Right. Because, you know.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kind of this.
It's doable, but while we wait for the wastewater, right?
Well, I mean, that, actually, it, it sounds like the, the sidewalk has to go in next, by next summer. Because twenty, twenty twenty-four is what Sherman said, so. So I, I doubt the wastewater is gonna be happening before then, so.
Yeah, I don't think the wastewater is happening.
Yeah, I don't think it'll happen all right.
But then to come around and dig up the sidewalks and whatever, does.
Oh, no.
You already have to dig up one side, and then. You already have to dig up one side, not like both sides.
Right. And how about a voter turn?
Oh, the voter?
Yeah.
Would we get twelve people?
Hundred eighty.
Hundred eighty? Did it pass? I didn't
Yeah, it was a hundred eighty, eighty, twenty. Eighty to twenty.
Yeah, well, that seems like a fair representation of that.
Um, I got four votes, my wife and my kids.
You were in the twenty, was that the twenty?
No, no.
Yeah.
We were four.
We were out of the signs.
So I actually spoke to Martin today on the crater. And prices were, I mean, it's very similar. Um, he still has some questions. He was going back and asking delivery dates, uh, get confirmed delivery dates. Um, he didn't, he wasn't overwhelmed with either of the salespeople or what they've been doing and trying to help him figure it out or what's best for the, for the town. Um, so, but he's been doing a fair amount of research to figure out which machine he wants. And he's told me he's right on the fence, he doesn't, he doesn't know. Um, one of the things that I expressed to him is I think it would be better if we take delivery of that into, um, uh, twenty four, like early twenty four, rather than have it here October, sit in the garage for
Six months till March.
Right, and pay for it during that time.
Yeah.
Or is it, you know, a truck
Sitting idle, yeah.
Into sitting idle, idle there, let's, um, we can do it. Right, to him, like he said, we're gambling on this machine that we're hoping to get to the end of the year.
Yeah.
So really, it doesn't matter as long as we guarantee that we get the other one by March. Um, so he's, you know, talking to them about that delivery, uh, first, first quarter of the year. Rather than, you know, October, November, because again, it's not gonna do us a lot of good sitting in the garage. You know, maybe a little bit of use for snowbanks, but
Yeah.
You know, we can save six months.
I am saying
Finance pick lack.
You know, it's not use, really.
Really not used to it.
Thing right now on your warranty. You know, you want Warranty, it's gonna use up and all that stuff.
So, um, I expect out here, we need to talk to them this afternoon, get back to me, but so I suppose, or I expect by our next meeting, we'll have, um, a choice, get to many board decisions to go ahead and back. I think other than that, I haven't heard, talked to anyone. He said, did, you know, things going well at the road, they're just doing little projects, um, here and there across town. Um, they're possibly gonna tackle the big, um, culvert that was a problem on Hill. It's fairly big one, so they're, they're, they're not sure. I'm just thinking to push that off next year, but I reminded them that we have parking lot next year that we, that is gonna have to play on.
Right.
Um, so not pushing anything off, it may, it may come there. But I think that's, that's it for those guys. Uh, I'll have, I'll talk to Ron, I'll have him reach out to Silva's, is that, was that right? Yeah, Silva, uh, his attorney, to try to, but I don't know, it sounds like there was a lot of miscommunication or I mean, if the law was not passed, certainly the DRB is not going to be making decisions based on what could be coming of law. So the law's changed, so it can't really relate that on the DRB, you know, things have changed. Uh, and it sounds like the information that they were provided, uh, has expanded a little bit as well as far as processing on, on site. So I'll have Ron talk to their attorney and that, make, try to figure that out. Um, in agreement, like, uh, they have been meeting with Bliss Richard. It's funny, um, I really wonder whether the attorney and these folks are talking because all the things they, they were, she was discussing, it's already kind of
Resolved, yeah.
Um, so I'm wondering
Yeah.
They, they should call for better communication again, not, not our problem. I think that's, that's it. Um, we decided to move the meeting, thanks for pointing that out to me.
Yeah, July tenth, right?
Uh, to July tenth.
And the twenty.
Oh.
So then the next one will be the twenty fourth.
No.
Uh, two weeks in a row.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're gonna do two weeks in a row?
Yeah.
So July tenth and then the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Ooh, great. Just to keep it No, you're welcome. You can't
Okay, so that, 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 I mean, good.
That work for you?
No, yeah, absolutely.
Ah, all right. So why don't we, uh, take a moment and approve this like more minutes of June fifth?
I make a motion, we approve this like more minutes of June the fifth?
Second. Any, uh, discussion changes or anything on those? Now, all the people vote aye?
Aye.
All right, Tom, would you go or do you?
I can't vote, no, I'm here.
No, you can still go on.
Oh.
You can still read them.
I do, yeah. No, I, I, I didn't know.
I just wanted to check.
I did read them, yeah.
You're willing to approve? I did have one more thing. Uh, Sasha, hey, I spoke with Hannah Flynn, because she's my vet. Uh, she was just wondering if someone could, uh, reach out to the health officer and kind of ask him to reach out to her. Does she knows what her role is, because she's, has no idea.
I'll reach out to her more in the dark.
Oh, okay.
I have Dick reach out to
Sure, yeah.
Her. Uh, is there anything else below as far as old business that anyone had any comments on?
Nothing below, but the tree, Sasha, the third person is supposed to
They got to reschedule, they had some emergency last party, so he was gonna just get back to me as soon as he could.
Okay. Because it's Summer's pretty good. Fourteen, fourteen fifty, something like that.
I thought it was three green.
No. Well, that's
Okay. They opened up the PDF that they attached to it?
All right, I'll, I'll take a look at it again.
Okay, maybe I can thread it.
Yeah, okay. Um, I thought that was off the cheap.
We also, we did get a grant, uh, I think it was thirty five hundred for the security. Remember we
Yeah.
Security.
Yeah, out of the fifty three twenty six.
Right, so, um, what I want to make sure is that we've got, or look for the quotes. I know we had this one quote, um, I'll have Sasha, if he could look in to make sure we have done our due diligence as far as getting the quotes. Um, we've got money to pay for it, or pay for most of it anyways.
In five, yes, two thirds of it.
I mean, was that what Cheryl Lynn?
Yeah, she said we've got enough to cover about two thirds of the fifty three twenty sixes, or about thirty five hundred.
Let me just make sure there's She did send us a bunch of corona email, I guess you're looking for that.
I found when I read that, that the security thing was a, that the, uh, the emails Maybe I read it wrong, I was looking at an email from Cheryl Lynn, the security for the building, or I thought it was out of, out of the server, the email.
Two in here and then two on the outside of the building.
Cameras?
Cameras, yes.
Cause some, someone broke in here or no?
No, we had a few different scenarios that, that have happened.
Oh, all right, all right. But didn't Cheryl Lynn also write an email that there was something happened with the service, with the email or something? Was that or something?
Yeah, that was her.
Oh, all right, so it's just two different issues?
Two different things, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there's nothing, um All right, what, uh, anything new? Oh, you want, I don't think you want to comment on this, Rob. Um, I spoke to, um, Sean Hartlet from, uh, the Morcat store, the people who own the Morcat store. And they have generously donated a thousand dollars and then towards the papers or the, the Morfests or whatever. Like they have, so, um, a challenge on you, you three gentlemen, to, uh, find a, um, a donor, except five hundred or more. And, uh, just for
So you should have some friends up there.
Dollars for Morfests?
Uh, I know you've got plenty of friends that, uh, to make that happen, right?
To donate to help pay for some of the stuff on Morfests?
Yeah, okay. And, uh, any, any new business that you want to ask, that you want to bring up? All right, well, thank you everyone for coming. Um, we do have a few things aside. And, uh, John, can you want to take a look, um, at this? Robin, I'll send you with, uh, if you've worn that. Don, you want to start looking at this, uh, this is mostly paper.
Where is the Does our town go all the way to Route one hundred by still, still fire there?
It actually splits right in the middle of the snowfall.
Of the road itself or something? The building itself?
The bridge.
I think it's, I said it's a bridge, but I mean, it does go through, I think, a lot of snow.
I was just curious, what were your kind of complexes?
The town water or anything that it moves.
Well, I don't think I understand what they were saying about the crosswalk and moving the crosswalk with lights, whatever you call it.
I think they were talking about going across the other gallery or something.
Um, it would be crazy.
Well, that's part of their alternative thing. That's one option, because if it's easier to go across, that, that would make no sense whatsoever. And like I said, I wouldn't want cross, I went across there even if there wasn't a crosswalk.
I'd cross it.
It'd be like playing
One hundred with a light and go across.
That's scary, right?
I know we're signing stuff, but I mean, the Frank Piazza thing is moving along or is
Yeah.
Well, kind of what we're stuck with right now, um
Is what I grabbed, but we can't find some contractor to verify.
Yeah. Oh. No one wants to do it, no one wants to
No, I need the top one.
You need the top one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so if you know anyone, I don't know if you
Yeah, I don't know, I thought, I didn't know, I saw that, but I
I don't know anyone that's certified they can do it. Do you have time?
Yeah.
Oh, we could respect Sasha's work.
So does that fall back on us, that we can't find somebody to do this thing and now we're stuck again or?
I don't know, I don't know. I will, yeah, that was something on that one, what we do now.
Yeah.
Jim Simon, and, uh
Okay.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn second.
All favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, thanks, Orca TV.